Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a fairly hefty agenda tonight, and much of it is on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda this evening?
I...
Oops. We can't amend it?
Okay, I'm trying to look at which agenda is my most current.
The one had two pages to it.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure the item I wanted was there.
A motion and a second discussion or amendments to the agenda? Is there any proposed amendments? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. We are to our first citizen comment period. It is for items that are on tonight's agenda. There is also two public hearings. If you're here to testify on those, please wait till we call on those items. And then there's a second citizen comment period for items not on the agenda later in the evening. So at this point, I'll open the citizen comment period for items on the agenda tonight. Yes, Ms. Whittleton, please step forward and identify yourself.
Alyssa Whittleton. Good evening. My comment is regarding the minutes from the retreat. I respectfully say that I'm totally disgusted. These aren't minutes. These do not illustrate what you really talked about. And we requested at least three times that it be recorded. And so there has had to be a conscious decision there not to record it, even though in years prior we have. We didn't do it last year, and we also had some pretty bogus minutes. But we did the year before, and I found it really useful. And so I do not understand the conscious intention to not let us have the availability of what you have discussed. And if it gets right down to it, and we have to make public records requests to see if anybody had notes, that taxes are administration. So I don't see how that's transparency. And that was one of the platforms that many of you ran on this last election. So very disgusted with this because we're trying to work with you because you represent us. That's all I have to say. I just, sometimes I just don't think you want us here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We will be having, the consultant is working on her document as we had last year. Brandy and I provided, we got a draft of it, the edits, from our recollection, went back to her. So I would hope at the next council meeting, maybe the work study, we'd have those for you. So, and be able to share them with the public. Other comments for items on the agenda? Yes, sir?
Hey, I second what my wife had to say. Also, item 7B on the agenda tonight talks about increasing the amount, that the change order amounts from hundreds, or two, a hundred thousand for the mayor and fifty thousand for the engineer. And I think those are excessive. I understand that things are going up, but that is a huge jump to be made on two people's call. And I really think there should be a much lower limit and at least bring it to the council. You guys meet at least every couple of weeks. There's nothing in government that happens in two weeks. And it should be a council decision to increase, to make that larger an increase. And once again, I'm talking about the amount that we're paying for the foot ferry. Saturday after, in July, the ferry's gonna start running to Seattle. So at that time, we should not have to pay for Saturday service. It's only ten hours, but still that's eight hundred bucks that one of our local nonprofits could use for representing the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, ma'am, you raised your hand? If you could identify yourself?
Good evening, my name is Hannah. I am the director of the Port Orchard Film Festival. We have an item on the agenda tonight, and I just wanted to let you know that I'm here to answer any questions anyone might have.
Thank you. Other public comment for things on the agenda this evening? Okay, yes?
Jerry Harmon. I guess I'm, I know that there's, I didn't pick out which number it was here. But anyway, the idea that we're going to increase the tax on the gas. This council has increased sewers and stormwater and everything. And I think we even had somebody come in, the license tabs. And I know that you're, you can do it, but it just seems that there needs to be a break. You had a person here, I think, last week who was requesting some help on the car tabs. And it's, you have a lot of people out there. And I think that it initially was made lower on the natural gas taxes to get a lot of people to switch so that we wouldn't have the pollution. So here's another way to get more money for the city. But it's also hurting a lot of people in our community, all of the increases, not just one, but all. And so maybe that one could wait just a little bit longer so people can get used to all the other increases the council has put on this past year. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments tonight for anything on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll close this first citizen comment period. We are to our consent agenda, which is lengthy, but it's mostly easements for the Tremont project. Is there a motion to approve? Yes, Mr. Corrigan?
Make motion to prove, approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion and a second, any discussion of our consent agenda this evening? I'm happy to say that that represents nine of the fourteen easements for Tremont. We've got two more of them in today, and we should have the last three done by the next council meeting is the goal. So we should have all of the construction easements in place. Mark's been busy. So, no further discussion? All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Am I opposed?
Hearing none. Motion, consent agenda is approved. I'm on to the first presentation, which is a proclamation about the Community Service Day that's coming up. So, whereas the city of Port Orchard is excited to announce the Port Orchard Community Service Day on Saturday, April 29th, 2017, at 10:00 a.m., whereas throughout Port Orchard history, churches, fraternal organizations, service clubs have made numerous improvements to make Port Orchard a better place. By all of us coming together on a single day, we can really make a tremendous difference in the beautification of our city. And whereas, the designated locations for the improvements will be at City Hall, Edda Turner Park, Clayton or Central Park, the Givens Playground, and the shoreline in front of the West Bay Center. Pick your project, or start at one and visit each site throughout the day to help clean up the shoreline, pull weeds, and spread landscape material. And whereas, the city is encouraging all citizens to participate in helping to beautify the city by bringing your gloves and the tools needed to get the job done. If you can't participate on one of these projects, citizens are encouraged to come together throughout the city to clean up your neighborhood, local park, or other community areas. Now, therefore, I, Robert Putansu, Mayor of the City of Port Orchard, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2017, as Port Orchard Community Service Day. All right, we are on to our second presentation, which is the Fathoms Court. I see a bunch of lovely ladies here in the audience, so who's here to talk about it?
Good evening. I'm Helene Jensen, and I am the royalty director for Fathoms of Fun. It's very good to see all of you again for another year. We just crowned on March 4th these lovely ladies, and they're here again to service our community and to be there for you and to represent and be grand ambassadors for our city. So we're really excited for all the things that we have coming up. I see I need to put the 29th, I was just looking on my calendar to make sure we had the 29th on there. I think the PO, is Pops still doing something on March?
Sunday.
On Sunday, so we're doing something Saturday and Sunday. Okay. Clarify all that. So what I'm gonna do at this time is give them the opportunity for you to have them introduce themselves and tell them a little bit that they're gonna introduce themselves. They're gonna say their name and their title and their platform. Couple of them didn't know that until just two seconds ago. So we're gonna start with our queen, and then we'll move on down the line.
Hi, I'm Alena Woodfield. I'm the queen of Fathoms this year, and my platform is Coral Reefs and Our Impact on the Ocean.
Hi, my name is Hannah Lai. I am the Duchess this year, and I came back from the 2016 court, and I serve as a mentor for this court. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Wright, and I'm a senior princess, and my platform was on Veterans with PTSD. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jamison. I'm a senior princess, and my platform was Education in Washington. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Veronica Mihi, and I'm a junior princess, and my platform is on Girls Inc. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jelaine Wall. I'm a junior princess, and my platform was on Belieing. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Haley Chambar. I'm in seventh grade. I'm a junior princess with Fathoms of Fun, and my platform is helping the homeless. Thank you.
So this year, we have royalty members that range from 12 years of age, or actually sixth grade, all the way up to 20 years of age. So you will be really impressed this year, and I already am, with how mature our youngest act and how more mature that our oldest gets. I mean, they're terrific young ladies, and I know you'll enjoy getting to know them even more. I wanna take just a couple of moments to thank all of you for the support that you've given us throughout the year. Fred, and your contributions you've given to be onstage award, and all that your other support that you give just to invite us to events and let us be a part of doing what we can for the city. We really appreciate all of that. And as usual, I'm going to send the girls, because we have buttons and pins, and I know you're excited to see them, ladies. And they'll come up and entice you to buy buttons and pins. And as always, it goes towards our scholarship program, and this is our 50th year, so this is the money part right here. Important stuff. This is our 50th year, so I really encourage everyone to be a part of what we have going on in the city.
What did he just say, set me back here?
Nothing like pressure.
Okay.
Hello. Well, I'm doing pretty darn good. Thank you. My name is Clancy.
Can you show us the five dollar ones, even though I can't buy one right now? Any buttons?
So now, what do you have?
I would like a pin, please.
And after you do the buttons and pins, as usual, I want the city council to stand up.
Same design, but different quality.
Ladies, you don't wanna forget these folks right here.
The other ones, okay. Can I touch it? Okay, that's nice.
Something just happened to have five dollars.
Right here, you got these, don't leave these guys out. They'll cry. They'll just cry.
Thank you.
Now, as you know, this is our 50th anniversary, and we have brought up, brought back a few fun things. You know, I all know about the dinghy derby, so is the city council gonna build a derby, a dinghy, and put it in the dinghy derby? That'd be kinda funny. See if it floats, or be a part of the seagull splat run, where we could splat you with seagulls, you know, that stuff. You know what, someone asked me once, they said, "How do you make the seagull poop?" And they said, "Do you take seagulls and squeeze them?" I thought that was funny. He said, "Yeah, we catch them and just squeeze it out of them." It's just cornstarch and water, and it just literally flakes right off. But it looks like the real McCoy when you do it, so it's really funny. So I want you to be a part of it. Our carnival's coming back thanks to you guys. Thank you so much. We're excited.
Would you like a photo opportunity if we could all maybe come together here?
Okay.
Get the court down in front of us? Straighten your stash out, Sean.
God, I can't see you very well. I'll look at his pointing his pen.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for letting us come.
To the public hearings that are on our agenda this evening. We have two public hearings. The first is a public hearing on the interim ordinance number 007-17, adopted February 4th, 2014, 2017, establishing interim, updated interim subdivision code. Mr. Bond?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On February 14th, 2017, the city council adopted ordinance 7-17, an interim ordinance regarding subdivisions for a period of six months. Ordinance 7-17 extended the interim subdivision regulations that had been approved previously by ordinance 7-16, which repealed POMC Chapter 16.72 and replaced that chapter with an updated interim Title 26. Ordinance 7-17 was adopted as an emergency measure pursuant to RCW 3670A 390, which allows an interim zoning ordinance to be effective immediately and to continue in effect for a period of one year so long as the city staff adopt a work plan for implementation of a permanent code. The ordinance is adopted by a supermajority of the council, and a public hearing is held on the ordinance within 60 days of passage. The required public hearing has been duly noticed and will be held this evening in accordance with state law. And just an update, we are still on track to bring you the Unified Development Code in June, and that will continue to appear on your work study agendas for the next three meetings. And it's working its way through the Planning Commission as we speak. The recommendation is to hold the public hearing. Thank you.
This time, I'll open the public hearing on this matter. No one has signed up. Does anyone wish to testify on these interim ordinances that we're holding the public hearing on this evening? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. All right, I don't believe there's any action to be taken, correct? We just had to hold the public hearing on that item?
Correct, although council could choose to adopt findings, different findings if it wanted to.
So, any discussion of this matter? We'll move on then. We are to the second public hearing of the evening on interim ordinance number 08-17, adopted on February 14th, 2017, establishing updated interim permit processing code. Mr. Bond?
Yes, thank you. This is the same issue that we just discussed, except that it's for the permit processing chapter of the code instead of the subdivision chapter of the code, and it concerns ordinance 8-17. And the staff recommendation is to hold a public hearing in accordance with state law. And if you choose to adopt alternative findings, you may direct us to prepare those. Thank you.
So I will open the second public hearing. Also, no one has signed up to testify on this, but is anyone in the public wishing to testify on this matter related to the permit processing code? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, is there any discussion or direction to staff on this issue? Seeing none, we are to the executive session. I see it's there for 15. I think we've got some progress on this, so I think we're gonna take 10 minutes instead. And Mr. Bond, Treasurer Martin, and Ms. Howard, if you could join us. We have a real estate matter, and then we need to discuss a personnel matter also briefly.
[inaudible]
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 Oh, Randy? Session for two our business items. The first is sub business item seven A, adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code five point six eight natural gas franchise fee. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Petansu, members of the Port Orchard City Council, honored guests, citizens of Port Orchard. On June twenty fourth, twenty fourteen, the city council adopted an ordinance granting to Cascade Natural Gas Corporation, a franchise for the distribution and sale of natural gas in the city, which was codified under chapter five point six eight of the Port Orchard Municipal Code. As a condition to the granting of this franchise, Cascade Natural Gas is required to pay to the city as compensation and as consideration for the use of public right-of-way, an excise tax in the amount of two percent of its gross earnings on the sale of natural gas in the city. Under the Port Orchard Municipal Code and Washington state law, the city may, with adequate notice to Cascade Natural Gas, increase the excise tax rate to as much as six percent of Cascade Natural Gas' gross earnings on the sale of natural gas in the city without prior approval of the voters. The administration of the franchise agreements, of franchise agreements such as Cascade Natural Gas, results in expenses accruing to the city. The city provides for permitting, license, and franchise, inspections, plans, and construction, and prepares statements that assures the city maintain safe, healthy, productive, and aesthetically and culturally pleasing surroundings without environmental degradation. Those departments having responsibilities resulting in expenses associated with the administration of the franchise include Public Works, the Clerk's Office, Legal, the city attorney, and Finance, the Treasurer's Office. The city treasurer provided Cascade Natural Gas with written notice of the city's intent to increase the excise tax rate to six percent on March second, twenty seventeen. A rate change may not take effect prior to sixty days. Let me read that verbatim. A rate change may not take effect prior to sixty days upon enactment of the ordinance. Staff recommendation is to adopt the ordinance as presented.
Mr. Matt?
Yes, sir.
I move to amend, to adopt an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, chapter five point six eight, natural gas franchise as presented. Second?
Motion and a second discussion?
Yes. Mr. Martin, can you give me an idea and people, the audience, and those watching the recording, what the typical monthly gas bill will go up by this increase?
I haven't calculated that. I don't know.
A hundred?
I don't know.
Mr. Carchetti said four dollars per hundred, at four percent. So, depending on what your gas tax is.
Yeah, that'd be true. Yeah, that's true.
This brings, yes, Mr. Deener?
So, maybe I don't totally understand this, so I apologize. So, CNG would pay us an additional four percent. And is that four percent then passed on to the consumer?
Yes.
They do pass it on, but the statute is not written that way. They can pass it on, and they do. But the gases, the tax is actually an excise tax on the franchisee. But they have the ability to charge the consumer, and they choose to do that.
Do they have the ability to do that outright, or does that have to undergo a rate review through a utility commission?
I don't know the exact process on that. I do know that they have the ability to do it and do do it, and they do it now. But I don't know the construct for that. I'm sorry.
If you remember when we went through our budget process, this was part of our overall, you know, budget process, as we found ways to fund our tree bonding debt. This tax at two percent brings it on par with the electric utility tax, which is already at six percent. So that was the discussion that we had when we went through the budget process.
The, I might mention, you know, originally, this franchise agreement had been in place prior to twenty fourteen for twenty-five years, before it was renewed, and was held at two percent for those periods of time, which was quite a time. That's pretty much the discussion we had at the time, that we wanted to update it and put it on, I think it's on a five-year cycle now, with the ability that we could look at those rates more often than at once every twenty-five years.
Mr. Carchetti, I didn't have to make this more complicated than it needs to be, but I think another discussion we've had is moving this to July. It's the time of the year where gas usage is lower, so it gives time for people to prepare for it. That really, that conversation occurred after the budget. And so in the budget, we've got ninety-four thousand five hundred dollars by us trying to, you know, make this easy to pass on. It's actually gonna create an additional forty-four thousand dollars. And so we could do some math on this, be pretty simple. And if we wanted just to collect the ninety-four five over the biennial budget, we could calculate what that would look like, because it would probably reduce it by roughly, probably two percent, just simple math. And if we were to go from two to four, we would still collect the ninety-four thousand five hundred in our biennial budget. So from a fiscal perspective, you know, we would still meet our objectives that we went through the budget cycle, yet we would still fall short of trying to even out the taxes on our different franchisees, of taking it all to six percent. So this, we could almost phase this in and go from like two percent to four percent for this biennial, and then two years later, we could look to then level it out.
I'm missing that.
So, we were anticipating this tax going into place later originally.
And if we take action today, it doesn't go into effect for sixty days? For sixty days.
Understand.
So, which would be July first?
Right, I understand. But that's why this is on tonight's agenda, would be to, because we had talked about putting on in July versus maybe having this go into place in November, January, December at a later point. But if we were to wait and collect this starting in eighteen, it would have yielded ninety-four thousand five hundred dollars approximately, right? But because we're trying to move this up and start the collections in July, we're gonna end up collecting forty-four thousand dollars of additional revenue in addition to the ninety-four five that's in our budget. So we would have an opportunity to do the math, figure out what the tax would, the tax rate would be that would yield ninety-four thousand dollars beginning July first, ending December thirty-first, twenty eighteen, which would in effect kind of phase in this tax. Then once we get to our next biennial cycle, then bump it up to six percent. But...
Be a pretty complex...
It's a discussion point.
...equation, because really, between now and November, we're not real, I mean, I know my natural gas bill's about twenty-five dollars.
Well, someone already did this math, and they said between July and December, we're gonna collect forty-four thousand dollars.
I think we just halved.
We did. I did, and I rounded down.
Okay, we haven't rounded down. So, but I mean, I think we could get awfully darned close. I just wanted to bring it up that there, you know, there's another option here that we weren't really talking about, because that wasn't part of the conversation, to where if we didn't want to take it all the way to six percent, we could still meet our budget, you know.
Councilmember Deener?
Yeah, you know, I recall that this was touched on during the budget, but I don't know if it was as robust a discussion as we're having tonight. And I would like to talk more about phasing it in, and seeing if there's the will of the council to do that, rather than making that leap outright.
Mr. Chang?
I am still trying to understand the basic facts, so I apologize that I'm a little slow on this. But the way I read the fiscal impact was I thought the ninety-four five was projected from the rate going to six percent. Or is it the rate at two percent? So that's what I'm confused about. What is it at two versus what would it be at six?
If, the ninety-four thousand five hundred dollars was the original, which is now in the budget as a revenue to be collected January first, for the remaining part of twenty-eighteen, was the ninety-four thousand five hundred. Mr. Carchetti's point is because we're moving this six months in advance, we're collecting an additional forty-four thousand dollars. So that's why the, under the fiscal impact, it shows the ninety-four thousand five hundred in twenty-eighteen, and then it says a rate change in July would result in approximately forty-four thousand dollars additional biennial revenue, because you're gonna start to collect it.
So the forty-four thousand's over eighteen months, from July of this year through...
Correct.
Okay.
The additional forty-four on top of...
The approach is what he took.
Right.
So it's roughly forty percent. And so we could reduce the increase by forty percent over those seven, nineteen months, and still yield the ninety-four five that's been budgeted for, I guess is my point.
You know, it's, I'd like to say that, you know, we've been working on the POS for the bonding, and so we've been looking at the revenues. And natural gas is just, just tracks your temperature. The colder it is in winter, the more tax you get, and vice versa. So this is not an exact, we don't know what, what the temperature's gonna be.
Well, I have a question, and I hope it's not too much of an apple and orange, but every time when we talk about raising the franchise tax fee, which I see as a consumer tax, I do wonder about another area that we have some flexibility, which is like pull tabs. I understand from the information that I got that we are currently charging three percent, and we could go to five percent of, I guess, gross receipts. And the way I look at what I was given, and I've only looked at it quickly, it looks like that raises seventy-five thousand, or eighty thousand a year at three percent. So theoretically, and I know there's this elasticity that when you raise it, you make less, but theoretically, if that was raised from three to four percent, that might raise twenty-five thousand a year. Could that perhaps offset some of the revenue that we're anticipating from the gas tax? To me, and the reason I bring this up is it's, I don't think there's anything wrong with pull tabs, but to me, raising a sin tax is less unappealing than a consumer tax.
But, you know, we did hear when we looked, we looked at raising the pull tabs and did quite, I think you'll recall that probably back in about twenty-twelve. And, you know, we had a lot of testimony from various businesses that said that, you know, you have an adverse reaction when you raise the pull tabs. They see the pull tabs go, sales go down.
Particularly, I remember the testimony, it was because it's, we're taxing the gross, not their net.
So that, that's what we heard there. I think you might recall that.
I do recall that, Brian. We heard from two different people on that. But I would not expect them to be supportive of a tax like that. But you're correct that we are talking about the gross tax. There, it looks like there's another way of calculating, which we could offer to them, which is the net, and, which is a different way of calculating what they have to pay. But I'm just wondering if finance has considered maybe adjusting that rate, not to the full amount, but maybe... but maybe a partial amount, as another way to raise revenue.
In all frankness, finance has been focused on putting the city in the position to borrow $8.3 million from the municipal marketplace. And they're going to be much more receptive to an excise tax that's collected by the natural gas company than it would be from a game of chance from a marketer. And as you know, it's not gambling. They are called promotional games. So that, finance has been focused on putting the city in its strongest financial position, and I think the natural gas tax does that.
Mr. Martin brings a very valid point. We want to get the absolute best rating we can. A couple of tenths on eight million dollars is significant money. And, you know, we built a budget based on us implementing this as part of our funding mechanism for our roadway project.
Mr. Mayor, I would, my comments on this are, we, we have discussed increasing the Cascade Natural Gas back in about 2013 and 14. And at that point, there were a lot of other things we were looking at, including our water sewer and our transportation benefit district. We were looking at a lot of things, and we wanted to have a thorough understanding of the impact to the city as far as revenue and the impact to our citizens as far as their individual expenses. A great deal of thought had gone into this, and the reason that we have discussed moving it to the six percent is, the argument for that is you would want your utilities to be treated the same. And right now, we're charging Puget Sound Energy six percent for the electricity or the electric franchise. I'm not sure how we would distinguish and indicate that Cascade Natural Gas should have a lower franchise fee, you know, for that equity. I know I personally have gas, and my gas bill is $38 a month. So this will cost me, you know, in round numbers, a dollar and a half a month. So individually, I don't know that it is terribly onerous unless you really consume a lot of natural gas. The other point that we really need to think about is exactly what Mr. Martin had brought to our attention. We are committed to bonding up to $8.3 million for Tremont, and there will be a lot more expense than this if we cannot get the best rate possible. And we have discussed this tax, or this excise fee, along with the other tools that we had to implement in order to the best job we could for our citizens and to be as prudent as we can with our financial decisions.
Other comments? Mr. Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I think, you know, I would echo what Beck has to say, and I look at it from the standpoint that, you know, we're proposing to borrow eight-plus million dollars and pay it back over how many years?
Twenty.
Twenty years. And you take a quarter of a percent times that over a 20-year period. It's going to cost the city more than we otherwise would need to if we were to implement this. And then it's the equity issue, too, that, you know, Puget Power is six percent, this is not. And I agree with the treasurer. I'm on gas at my house, and my gas bill varies by the time of year and the temperature. And I just looked back real quickly at my last gas bill and figured it out, and it's, it would cost about $3 in one of the colder months of the year at my house. So I don't want to minimize the impact of $3, but the fact is, $3, I think, is affordable, knowing that that's one of my worst gas bills of the year.
Others? Mr. Deener?
So would our rating be impacted if we were to phase it from four for 12 months to six for the following 12 months?
My recommendation would be not to phase it. And the reason for that is, is what we're showing, this is the last step of the car tabs, the raising of the tax. Everything that we've done over the past two budget cycles was to put the city in the position to show to the municipal marketplace that the city had put in place all those taxes available to them to show financial strength. That, all that body of work will go to S&amp;P Rating Agency, and this is, would fall right into that to show that, as Councilman Ashby said, six percent on the franchise tax, including our water sewer bills, have the six percent on it, so that's all part of a package. It wouldn't take much on 20 million, on a 20-year, 8.3, you know, million-dollar payoff. In basis points, a basis point is one one-hundredth of a percent, and that's how these are calculated. And it might not seem like one or two basis points mean much, but when it's 8.3 million dollars over a 20-year payoff, the $44,000 that you're talking about here could get ate up really quick if in fact that rating isn't the highest and best that the city has worked to be, put itself in. And I really see this as the last brick in the wall that puts you in that position to say, the city's done everything it reasonably could do to put itself in the financial condition to complete the Tremont widening project.
Well, I think that was really good to hear, and I'm, I'm very happy to hear that. So I'm happy to move forward as presented.
Is there a motion? Don't believe they have a motion on the floor?
Didn't Clancy make a motion?
No, we did.
We do have a motion.
Okay.
Have you forgotten about me already?
No, I have not. So we have a motion and a second. We did, who made the second?
Deener.
Scott did.
Scott did.
Scott, Mr. Deener did. Okay, sorry, lost track. Further discussion? Okay, will we be taking a vote on business item 7A, adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, 5.68, natural gas franchise fee increase? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So, no, one opposed. Motion carries.
I do want to thank the council. I know this has been a long road to get here, no pun intended. And it's never easy to raise revenues. I understand that. We all live in the real world. But I think in the long run, you've made the most prudent financial condition in the best interest of the taxpayers of the city tonight, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would appreciate it, though, if we would put on one of our finance committee agendas looking into increasing that pull tab. I would like to explore that at Mr. Chang's request.
I'll see that it's placed on the agenda.
Thank you.
All right, we are to 7B, which is adoption of a resolution repealing Resolution Number 009-15, Small Works Roster, and 006-15, Change Order Authority, and adopting a procurement policies and procedures. Clerk Reinsen?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So the city adopted Resolution Number 86-16 on December 20th, 2016, setting forth standards of the conduct and written procedures in accordance with local, state, and federal regulations. In reviewing current resolutions, it was determined that Resolution Number 009-15 should reflect current local, state, and federal laws, and therefore, staff is asking to repeal this resolution and for staff to provide the council with a more thorough and comprehensive document outlining the city's procurement policy and procedures. During that process, staff updated the finance committee at their February 28th meeting and was directed to have a full council discussion at changing the change order limits, which is identified in Resolution 006-15. The amounts were discussed and have been included in the procurement policies documentation that has been provided to you. I'll remind you that you have two additional documents that were emailed out to you very late this evening. I understand it's a big document to comprehend. There's a lot in there. We have vetted this as much as we can, and of course, we can always go back and review and edit as much as, every time we look at it. But there is a red line version that is from the beginning of January to now. And then the second item is in red line on the first page that has April 11th, 2017. That is what we're considering the most current version of the draft document that is before you for your consideration. And the auditor has been provided this document. We're still waiting for their feedback, but we wanted to bring this forward in good faith, stating that we've had a process. We're working through it within the first 90 days, and staff's looking for council's direction as to how to proceed with the document.
Mr. Kachary? Mayor, I'd like to move to continue this to the last meeting of the month. I think that information we just learned about the auditors not being able to provide their feedback to us I think is really, really important. That's really what spearheaded this whole process, and I think it's imperative that we get their feedback to make sure that we hit that mark. So therefore, I move to continue.
So we have a motion to continue to the April 25th meeting? Is that your goal? Two weeks from tonight? Okay.
I would second that.
There's a sec. Councilmember Ashby seconds that motion. Further discussions or any edits or direction you want to give to Brandy at this point, so that we can make the document as clean as possible on the 25th when we bring it forward?
Or if you hadn't had time to fully digest the document, you're always more than welcome to provide, you know, give me a call, send me an email, stop by my office, or again, tonight on the dais, or in two weeks.
Clausen, do you have a comment?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I was just trying to look between the two. In the original red line version, and you may have already caught this and corrected it, but on page eight, local and state, there's a statement there that says 40,000 and over single craft, or 65,001 and over multiple craft up to, and in this document, it shows 3 million.
Oh, okay. It's probably 300,000.
Looks to be fixed in the.
I was just looking for it and corrected, and I, it may have been already.
Looks to be fixed.
What's the page of that?
Page seven of 22, Public Works.
So it looks like you caught it, but make, take a look to be.
Yeah, it does. Okay, it is correct in this revised.
In the version we got for today.
Thank you for, for that was corrected.
So, the one with the red line that says April 11th is the most recent one with edits. So got two more weeks to look at this between now, you know, we publish the agenda, you know, the Friday before the Tuesday. So if you, which would be, I don't have a calendar in front of me, whatever that Friday is. If you got your edits to Brandy, so we can make sure we bring forward the cleanest document we can.
The two Fridays, the 21st.
Friday, the 21st, and first thing in the morning. So really, if you work toward end of business day on Thursday, the 20th, would be the best scenario. And then we'll get the feedback from the auditors to, and incorporate any changes that they recommend.
Send that out to us in advance would be great.
Yes, we will. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to continue this to April 25th. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries to continue this. We are to 7C, adoption of a resolution approving new job descriptions, salary scale, and organizational chart, organizational chart for the Department of Community Development. We have our HR coordinator, Deb Howard, here with us tonight to talk about this.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. On October 11th, 2016, the City Council approved an update to the 2007 salary survey to provide the opportunity to make adjustments over time to bring those salaries up to a competitive level. As part of the 2016 salary survey with Northwest Management Consulting, the consultant agreed to consider additional information relating to interviews, job descriptions, methodology, methodology provided by the city. Departments were to forward that information to the consultant for review in February of 2017. Community Development requested review of the part-time DCD administrative assistant, front counter receptionist, and the public works permit clerk. It was determined through revisiting comparable jurisdictions that all three jobs have the same basic skills and duties with some variation, and should be changed to a new position of permit clerk, with a new salary scale commensurate with those responsibilities. The DCD office manager permit coordinator position was reviewed, and it was determined that this position be revised to an office manager with a salary scale applied commensurate with those responsibilities. DCD prepared an organization chart, adapting the changed positions reflecting the new roles and responsibilities. The Council Finance Committee conducted a due diligence review of the new positions described in organizational chart. The data attained from this supplemental salary survey improves the city's compensation structure so that there is internal consistency, and at the same time, it is at norm with industry standards. The Council Finance Committee recommends adoption of a resolution approving the new job description salary scale and organization chart reflecting permit clerk and office manager positions with DCD.
Mr. Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving the new job description organizational chart and salary scale for the permit clerk and office manager position.
Second. Motion and second discussion? I just want to share, too, while we're taking three separate work jobs and we're making basically one job description, so they're somewhat interchangeable. And the net effect of all four of these changes was actually a savings of about $6,000 annually. So, you know, brought some up, and two of these positions, that are actually the ones that we're going to retreat in the, in the pay scale, are open positions that we haven't filled at this time. We've got a temp filling one of them, doing the work, and if you approve this tonight, we'll be going out by the end of the week to post new job. So other questions? Mr. Deener?
I just wanted to applaud the city for being competitive in its pay scale and can attest that it's distressing to lose staff to other jurisdictions because of better pay, good staff to other jurisdictions.
Other questions? Comments?
Now, I would just compliment Nick Bond for realizing that the other survey perhaps didn't fully understand what his staff was doing and asked for it to be reviewed, and that was successful. So I appreciate him doing that and providing equity for his team.
Good job. All right, we'll be voting on adoption of a resolution approving new job descriptions, salary scale, and organizational chart for the Department of Community Development. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Bond, go hire some employees. All right, we're to 7D, which is approval of a contract with Kitsap Harbor Tours for foot ferry service. Clerk Reinsen?
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. I'm going to recuse myself from discussing.
Clerk Reinsen, you ready? You were. Thank you, Deb.
So the city has partnered with the city of Bremerton and Kitsap County to provide additional.
I'm not sure your microphone's working.
Hello?
Now we got you.
So, as stated earlier, the city of Port Orchard has partnered with the city of Bremerton and Kitsap County to provide additional foot ferry service during the summer. The summer is to help increase tourism to the area. Adding additional hours to the foot ferry service will provide citizens the opportunity to participate in festivals, farmers' markets, and evening activities. The agencies are seeing value in this service and is bringing it, bringing in additional tourism dollars. Each entity has provided their preference of days and times of the foot ferry service, and they have agreed to the terms and conditions outlined in the agreement that's been presented. in the agreement that's been presented to you. Upon the agencies providing the preferred service days, there was a small shortfall of funding the entire summer as in the past. The agencies have agreed to extend the service on Memorial Day weekend, and then not again until the last weekend in June. This will allow the ferry to continue service until the traditional Labor Day weekend of September 4th. Based on the projection ridership, the total estimate cost of the services presented will be approximately $24,000. Staff has estimated approximately $9,000 will be received from the riders. The city of Bremerton and the city of Port Orchard will contribute $7,000 each, and Kitsap County will contribute last, covering any shortfall up to $1,500, bringing the total estimate revenue of $24,500. And I just want to point out that in our original discussion, Councilmember Ashby, Councilmember from the city of Bremerton.
Jerry McDonald.
Jerry McDonald and Mayor Lent all met early in 2017 to discuss what kind of ridership would be needed for this year. And it was discussed to keep it the same as last year, with the exception of taking out Saturday service, which is just one hour from 8:00 to 9:00. So a few months after that meeting, they were looking at their data, and they felt that their merchants benefited from that extra hour on Saturday, and has asked the city of Port Orchard to include the additional hour, just like we did last year for Saturday service. In speaking with the city of Bremerton, we have implemented into the contract that they will cover the shortfall up to $1,800 if it directly reflected the additional Saturday service. So, long story short, they're going to do 7,000 upfront, and if there's any shortfall, they'll cover up to 1,800, and then we have the county at 1,500. So with that, staff recommends approval of the contract as presented.
Ms. Lucarelli?
I move to approve the contract authorizing the mayor to execute a joint agreement between the city of Port Orchard, the city of Bremerton, and Kitsap County for additional summer foot ferry services in an amount not to exceed $7,000.
Second. Motion and a second by Councilmember Deener. Discussion of this issue?
We have had conversations with all of our partners. We did it, should we say, we debriefed in the fall, and then we had other conversations the first part of the year, and it seems to be working for everyone. We had originally agreed not to add the Saturday, the hour on Saturday. It gets a little confusing. Most of our merchants are closed by then. It gets real hard on a Saturday when that last hour, it's cash only, they can't use their ORCA card. It's a little hard to. But the city of Bremerton felt that was very important, and so we said we'd like to be a good partner, but if we have any shortfall because of that, our maximum is 7,000, and then they agreed to pay the addition, if there were any shortfall, they would pay that. So I'm, again, I'm excited and wishing the port would partner with us again, but the port has elected not to do that. So I'm happy for our merchants that we have the Saturday and the Sunday service available.
Other comments or questions, Ms. Kachardi?
When all of this was discussed back in the fall, I don't think it really took any consideration the new fast ferry that'll be operable on July 7th. So is this doubling up any new service that they'll be putting in, or is all of this still in addition to the service that will be done by the addition of the?
In response to the citizen's comment earlier today, at some point, I believe the ferry district that Kitsap Transit has created will take over that passenger only, or the foot ferry to Bremerton. The sales tax just went into effect, and they have not had an opportunity to collect the money that they need to fund this. And so we're a year away from this. I'm assuming this is probably the last year that we would be funding this.
And that did come up in our conversation earlier this year with the city of Bremerton, and they recognized that, hey, the tax isn't going to be effective until April. It's going to be a few months before they receive it. So in good faith, let's just move forward for this year, and then we'll meet back at the end of this year to see where the fast ferry is at with.
Great answer. I'm glad it's been discussed. It's perfect.
I happen to be the Kitsap Transit Board Chair, and you guys is representative on the Transit Board, and they're spot on. We don't get the first dollar till July 1st. Next budget go around, that will be a discussion at Transit, is moving all of the ferry operations into one house, the buses into a separate operation, and it hasn't been decided yet, but I'm definitely supportive of that. You know, all of the ferries being in one operation, and they need to work, you know, if we're going to run the high-speed ferry, you've got to be able to get from Seattle back to Port Orchard, too. So that'll definitely be my vote. But there are nine, there are nine of us, so. So other questions or comments?
I guess the only comment is the amount that this is paying for Saturday is just that one hour between 8:00 and 9:00 PM. But it is an interesting question that what is the last ferry from Seattle? It's after that, the faster passenger ferry. So there would be no connecting with.
There is another one after that, correct?
So, yeah, once again, you have to drive to Bremerton to take the ferry to get back to Port Orchard, and I don't like that either, but that's the way it's been.
Yeah. And I hope that's addressed as we, you know, expand that, have a full year of tax collection, and have a better idea of the revenues over Transit. Because we need to run both ferries at the same time. I agree with you. Okay, other questions? Okay, we'll be voting on approval of a contract with Kitsap Harbor Tours for foot ferry service. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Give Mr. Clussen for us.
Or Amy, right now.
We are on to item 7E, which was a discussion of the purchase of the property for the Comfort Inn. As we know, we had some additional information on this, and a lot of it came together today. Mr. Bond has been working on this for months. So with that, Mr. Bond, do you have a brief for the public on what we're doing?
Yes, thank you. And please note, I passed out some additional materials while you were in back midway through the meeting. The staff report had been updated to include a revised motion. In 2014, the city successfully applied for a Recreation Conservation Office funding for the purchase of a portion of 1121 Bay Street totaling 1.88 acres. The area to be purchased is shown on the attached boundary line adjustment and is on the screen above. You can kind of see that there's a bold line running vertically through that property, and we're buying the left portion of that. Thank you, Brandy. The city entered into an agreement with RCO concerning the purchase in these funds. We've prepared a Phase 1 environmental assessment on the site, and after reviewing that report, the council directed staff to move forward with negotiating the purchase. We also obtained an appraisal and appraisal review for the purchase pursuant to RCO grant requirements, and we provided the owner a just compensation and relocation notice indicating the value of the property as being $264,000. The owner, Young &amp; Nam Inc., has agreed to sell the property to the city below the appraised value for $200,000. This purchase price is also less the amount that is owed to the first position lien holder, Fife Motel Inc., who has owed approximately $264,000, and who is willing to forgive the difference between the funds dispersed at closing and the amount that they are owed. The attached purchase and sale agreement is contingent on the owner first closing on other easements being purchased for the Bay Street pedestrian path, which Mr. Dorsey has been working on, and obtaining a partial reconveyance documents from their lender to remove liens from the property, the portion of the property being purchased. In addition, the suggested motion states that the council approval of the purchase and sale agreement is contingent on Fife Motel's execution of a second agreement, which actually they emailed to us this evening and had signed. And so before you, there are two agreements. The first one we're asking you to move approval on is an agreement with Fife Motel whereby they are agreeing at closing of the purchase and sale agreement to fully reconvey and release the deed of trust on the property. The second agreement is the purchase and sale agreement itself with Young &amp; Nam between the city, with the city, to purchase that property for $200,000. And so the staff report that I printed and handed out to you has the suggested motion. Staff recommends approval of both agreements.
I would assume you would prefer these be individual motions and individual actions. So Councilmember Kachardi?
Mayor, I move to approve an agreement between the city of Port Orchard and Fife Motel Inc. concerning full reconveyance and release of the deed of trust.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion or comments of this first motion. Hearing none. We will be voting on a motion to approve an agreement between the city of Port Orchard and Fife Motel concerning full reconveyance and release of the deed of trust. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, first motion carries. Second motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the purchase and sale agreement between Young &amp; Nam Incorporated and the city of Port Orchard to purchase a portion of 1121 Bay Street for 200,000, contingent on Fife Motel's acceptance of the provided agreement.
Second.
Motion and a second of the second motion. Any questions or comments from Mr. Bond or myself? Hearing none. Be voting on the approval of a purchase and sale agreement between Young &amp; Nam Inc. and the city of Port Orchard to purchase 1121, a portion of 1121 Bay Street for 200,000, contingent on Fife Motel's acceptance of the provided agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Thank you. We'll build a park.
Yeah.
All right, we are on to 7F. Thank you for being patient. We are just for approval of a noise exemption to Dragonfly Cinemas for a concert held at the Brick House Restaurant, which will open that, I believe, that same weekend. So Clerk Reinsen, what do you have for us?
So, April 6th, 2017. So the city received.
A request from Dragonfly Cinema to extend the noise disturbance time from 11:00 PM to 12:00 AM. They are hosting a Port Orchard Film Festival, which will include a live music concert at the Brick House 714 Bar and Grill. The extension is to allow the Dragonfly to bring in more people to enjoy the show. In addition, it will create, if not allowed, it will create a disturbance in the event by having the band transition to a smaller indoor stage. However, Port Orchard Municipal Code 9.24.050, subsection 1G, states, "The creation of frequent, repetitive, or continuous sounds which emanate from any building, structure, apartment, or condominium with unreasonably, which unreasonably disturbs or interferes with peace, comfort, and repose of owners of possessors," sorry, I'm having problems with my Ps, apparently, "of real property such as sound from musical instruments, audio sound systems, band sessions, or gatherings, particularly after hours of 11:00 PM and before 7:00 AM, or at any time and place so as to unreasonably disturb or interfere with peace, comfort, and repose of owners of possessors of real property unless and authorized by a special permit issued by the city of Port Orchard. This item was discussed at the Economic Development Tourism Committee on April 10th. The committee, along with the police department, are supportive of this request. Staff recommends approval of the temporary special permit."
Your motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to issue a special permit to approve, I guess, approval of the noise exemption to the Dragonfly Cinema for a music concert to be held at the Brick House the weekend of May, or the evenings of May 5th and 6th.
Second.
Okay. So I'm going to restate that motion. I believe your motion was that you moved to approve the Dragonfly Cinemas to host a music concert at the Brick House 714 Bar and Grill, and will continue until 12:00 AM on May 5th and 6th, 2017, and authorize the clerk to issue a special permit.
That's exactly what I said.
I thought that's exactly what you said.
That's what I thought I heard you say.
And as maker of the motion, I get to talk first.
Absolutely.
And I just can't thank Nick and Amy enough for bringing this film festival to the city of Port Orchard. They have entries internationally, and they have entries coming from Massachusetts and all throughout the United States. And it's just really, really an exciting event to be having in Port Orchard. And on Friday and Saturday evenings, they have an after-party. And so with being at 11 o'clock, that after-party was going to be very limited. And they also are partnering with the new establishment downtown to help them kick off their opening weekend. So it is truly just a great weekend for Port Orchard, and I'm hoping that the council will be supportive in allowing them this extra hour.
And then if I may add, I know that they had spoke at the Economic Development Committee Monday, and there was two things that we asked them to do their due diligence on, and one of them is to make sure that the Brick House had their certificate of occupancy, and the other one was to make sure that they had their cabaret license in place. And I can let you know that the Brick House has come in and applied for their cabaret license, so they will be issued that well before in advance, so.
The other thing that I didn't mention is in the letter that the Dragonfly provided to the Economic Development Committee was that they would be going to the neighbors and inviting them down for a sneak preview of the films, and they would be going, using social media and going door to door to let the neighbors know of the event and the hour extension. So they were going above and beyond, doing a lot of outreach.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Chang?
I'd like to invite Amy to just describe to us the films that they're going to be having. I understand that they're original, and they're either made, or some of them perhaps are about Port Orchard.
Yes, sir. We actually have a, I actually have a little sneak peek of the schedule with me, so I can definitely let you know about that a little bit. We actually have a northwest, northwestern block, a lot of which come from, a couple of which come from Port Orchard, but a lot of which come from the state of Washington as well as Oregon. We have different categories, including short films, documentaries. Oh, I'm so sorry. So, there we go. And we even have a documentary from Seattle called Sisterhood of Shred, which is about female mountain bikers, and we've gotten, yeah, countless from this area, as well as, like you stated, we have, one of my favorite ones is called A Chaste Marriage. It's from Turkey. We have them from Luxembourg. We have entries from Japan, China. So it's been really exciting to see how many locals have come out, but also how many from other countries as well. If I may, I could bring up.
Certainly.
Yes.
And this is just the, no problem. And this is just the first graph of our film
festival. We actually are still getting entries. We got three of them today, I believe? Yeah, three of them today. So we have four more days until it's closed, and we're still receiving entries, a couple of which were from Port Orchard. So it's been really exciting to see.
Wow.
Putting this on the map. You're putting this on the map.
Wasn't it exciting?
Other questions? Thank you.
These are fascinating.
Okay, we ready to take action here?
Yeah.
Moving to approve the Dragonfly Cinema to host a music concert at the Brick House 714 Bar and Grill that will continue until 12:00 AM on May 5th and 6th, and authorize the clerk to issue a special permit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We are to council committee reports. Finance Committee, Mr. Clussen?
Mr. Mayor, we had a finance committee on March 30th where we reviewed the sales tax receipts, and I'm pleased to report that the sales tax is coming in better than we had projected. I think we're at about 3.86 ahead for the first three months of the year, which is certainly encouraging. Our REIT funds are coming in quite well. We had that one major sales that certainly did a big boost for our real estate excise tax receipts. We also heard, the treasurer gave us a quick preliminary report on the official statement that we're preparing for the issuance of the bonds and where we are with that. We also heard from, I see Deb has left, from our commute trip reduction folks who are implementing a. implementing a incentive program where the participants in carpools, that carpool to our facilities will receive a $50 stipend per month, which I have to admit, biased, but I thought that was quite innovative and exciting. We talked a lot about the salary survey that we approved tonight, as well as some other positions within Public Works that the mayor and Mark are working on that we expect to hear more later. So, pretty much what we talked about at the finance committee.
Thank you for your report. Economic Development and Tourism.
Yes, we met Monday, and the first item on our agenda was the Dragonfly Film Festival request, and so we all know the result of that. We had then our monthly interaction with the Port Orchard Chamber and the Bay Street Association, and that continues to do a nice job of having conversation with them. We then, Fred introduced a item, he had had a request from a citizen saying if the city was, would create a policy or an ordinance banning the sale of puppy mill dogs and cats within, within the city. And as Fred indicated, or as Councilman Chang indicated, it would be kind of symbolic, and it was a social issue. And he will follow up on that and bring us back more information if, if it's warranted. We then went on to our discussion on the tourism promotion strategic plan. We've been working on that monthly since January or February. We are on track to bring it to the May work study. We will have a final draft for review by the committee at our May meeting. And if any council member would like a preview of that before the work study, I know that Brandy would be happy to email you the red line version or the draft version that we have. We then spent some time talking about street closures for special events, and the state has given us some new procedures, the process for closing a state highway that will now be done by the event organizers and not the city. She was putting the appropriate application and information on our event toolkit and, you know, making that available to organizers on our website. We also discussed and reviewed that any event that is actually requesting a street or road closure, that those are not approved administratively, that particular event application comes to council for approval. So.
Miss Councilwoman Grash, I can just add, and I started working on the draft.
And that'll be ready for the committee to review at the May's meeting.
Okay.
Let me, I take that back. I'm working on a draft, and it will be before the full council at the work study session next week, where you guys can take a peek at that, because I believe the intent was to bring, during the committee discussion, past committees discussions, to bring new road closures to the full council, so we're going to amend the code to reflect that, but we're going to have a draft for you guys next week, and then the, the goal is to get it adopted, approved by the next council meeting, so we don't hold up the other events in process, because I believe the soonest one is in June, and we need to give them a yea or nay. So.
Okay.
That'll be quickly coming before you guys.
Okay. And then we had just a brief discussion on public restrooms downtown. The other thing of note is that our May meeting is going to be May 1st at 9:00 o'clock. That's the first Monday of the month, rather than our normal second Monday. We do have committee members that are going to be out of town on the second Monday, and so we rescheduled it for May 1st.
Thank you for your report. Utilities, your report?
Yes, we were scheduled to meet next Monday, April 17th, but there isn't enough new material to warrant having a committee meeting, so we are rescheduling our next meeting to May 15th here at City Hall, 9:30 AM.
I don't believe SAC has met, and we've got a presentation last month.
We did. The next one, next meeting being June 21st.
Okay. Land use?
I reviewed the last meeting at the previous council meeting, and our next meeting is April 19th, 7:30 AM here.
Lodging tax?
I would like to commend Councilmember Ashby on her strategic tourism plan. I think it's a very nice effort to, to pool the resources and give it a more holistic viewpoint. And I'm going to be pulling, we have, we have shared this with all the lodging tax advisory committee members, and some of them have also attended this, but I'm going to be pulling them, see if they'd like to have an individual meeting. I'm going to encourage them to get any input that they may have by our May meeting. I think they will get behind it, but there may be an adjustment.
Thank you for your report. Chimes and Lights?
Yes, we have our next meeting on Monday at 3:30 here at City Hall.
And I've gotten conflicting information. So will the Marquis support the lights or not, Mark? I've heard from Public Works staff that we believe we're going to be okay with that. And I know you've been gone on vacation, you're on your second day back, and maybe you don't know. So I'm sorry to put you on the spot here.
So Mike Delaine did come into my office this morning and talk to me about the plan, so I don't, I'm assuming he briefed you prior or not. Okay.
So we have a topic.
So I can share with the council what I, what I've been told.
So why don't we talk about this at the directors' meeting in the morning?
Okay, and my, my goal was to share it with the, my goal was to share it with, I didn't realize the director didn't know, but to share it with the committee on Monday, the Festival of Chimes and Lights Committee. So it looks promising. There's going to be one little minor catch, but I will share with everybody.
Sorry, I didn't mean to ambush you. I just, Chimes and Light was talking, and I went, mm, I thought I heard something about this. So, all right, we will get on to the report of the mayor. We've got the Fathoms Parade approaching. I'm assuming one of you is going to take a leadership role on that and tell us what you wouldn't want to do. This is the second time I've mentioned it. I get heads nodding, but, so I think you need to discuss amongst yourself. Do we want to add that to a?
Do we want to do that right now, or do we want to do that?
We want to add it to the work study next week?
Work study.
Okay, so can we add that to the work study for next week? Okay, I'm just pestering you on that. Just plugging the Community Day of Service again, I hope all of our council members will be down there. Do we need t-shirts or something?
No.
No?
I think we need pizza, though.
We need? So if I've got 200 people down there, are we providing pizza?
For the first 50 people.
All right, okay, well, let you pick up a collection for that. So, anyway, I hope to see all of us there. Maybe we should plan, I hope we have so many volunteers that we have an opportunity to pop from site to site and thank everybody. That's going to be really my goal. Maybe we won't. Maybe it's going to be the eight of us doing all the work, but I have been out talking to service clubs about this, and I think this is going to be really well supported by our communities. So I hope you got it on your calendar. We've got a survey, we put, remember you asked me to put a survey. The question was, would you be more inclined to attend a city council meeting if they started at 6:30? We did not get nearly the number of responses that we got to our last question, but I did get 29 entries, and 22, or 76% said, yes, they would be. So do with you what with that. So the survey said that they would be more inclined to attend if the meeting started a half an hour earlier.
Let's do it.
So.
An hour earlier. Half hour.
6:30, so half an hour earlier. So our work study and our business meetings. So Clerk Reinderson would need to prepare an ordinance to.
We need to amend our code. Our code, I believe our code says that we start at 7:00, so I had to spring forward a draft code for you guys to review and adopt.
Our code says we end three hours later at 10:00, so I would assume.
And that'll be adjusted to 9:30?
Adjust that to 9:30 also. So we would start, and when would you like to start that? In May or in June?
May.
In May?
Yes.
May?
May week.
Okay, so we'll enact it.
So I'll bring forth amended version of the April 25th council meeting for consideration.
Okay, just, you know, we're also using Facebook as a tool, and, you know, I'm not a Facebook person, so I don't know how this magic works, but it tells us, the staff tells me how many people we're reaching with this. So this survey, we reached 125 people. It was only shared twice. The Community Service Day, we've reached 898 people. The Get Fit Port Orchard, which, the, why was it the Health District, Health District Board Meeting? They called me out and commended me for promoting fitness in our community. 258 people that reached. And we have a job posting for a part-time parking enforcement officer, and that Facebook post has reached 3,304 people. So.
What the interest is.
So the.
At what point is it considered gone viral?
I don't know. Just sharing with you some data. All right. I went this evening before this meeting to the Port of Bremerton's Commissioners' Meeting, and I shared with them our Tremont project, where we're at with that. I talked about the McCormick Village Park, so I brought that pretty picture since I was traveling with that. And then at our last work study, we had some concepts, and then in front of you and for the public there, we have the latest iterations of this, and I just want to share with you, the Rockwell, and the Port Commissioners were positive and receptive to these park concepts, as, because one of them is on their property. So the, the Rockwell Park, I mean, you'll see, you know, the, as we discussed, the seating and open space that takes into the view, the view of the water, mountain vistas. It adds parking. We've got one, two, three, four parking stalls. We've got beach access to that sandy beach, kayak launch point, and the signage, and you can see a, an example of a sculptural interpretive signage. So we're trying to make the sign look like somewhat of a piece of artwork. When you get to the waterfront park, or next to the Marina Park, it creates more seating and lawn, and a lawn terrace for the existing gazebo and the concert goers. We've got the Pervious Paved Plaza that provides green open space for public use, for the farmer's market, for car shows, for public events. We've got the Arbor Swing feature that we all liked, brought forward to this example. She struggled with trying to get a public art piece in here, because it was getting busy. So that's how we came to the sculptural signage. So, you know, maybe as we build the pathway and further expand, potentially further expand this park, that we get some sort of large, you know, art, piece of artwork in there.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
It was more, I felt, about creating an open inviting space that we, that's multipurposed, and just wanted to, is everybody, is this, did I capture what we discussed there at the meeting? Because I, I want to give the consultant the go-ahead to finish her 30% design.
The only thing is, I will make a plug once again for a water feature, and I know it is very close to the water, as was pointed out last time, but this water feature may be safer in cleaner water than is often available in the inlet.
What I will share with you, when we expand City Hall, we have a well out here that we have to cap, and it's problematic, because the last time we tried to, we floated the parking, we raised, the parking lot started rising. So one of the things that Steve Rice and I talked about is making that part of a stormwater system, and actually a, a water source that someone could come, they have one down in Olympia, Mr. Martin showed it to me, where folks come and get artesian water and fill their, their water bottles and their water jugs, and it's kind of the cool thing to do. So I think we have an opportunity to do something like that. It just, it makes the space not as usable, because we, I think we still need our farmer's market and the car shows and all those other things we're doing down there. I'm comfortable moving the parking, you know, the, the long-term parking, but we, we've got our festivals and things I think we want to be conducive to, so. Mr. Clausen?
Well, I'm just playing on Fred's comments, and I think, you know, you were talking about struggling to find a way to bring in the arts and doing it with signage, and I think you could do something that could incorporate all three, with a small water feature around the sign or something of that nature that.
A water feature around the sign?
Yep.
All right.
Or through it.
You have to pay for it, though.
Or underneath it.
We'll get a sponsor.
Just some more of your buttons, Mayor.
Water feature around the sign.
As part of.
As part of the sign, all right? So if I get her to find a way to do that, or we can, it isn't the 100% design, I'm trying to get to a 30% design, which will get us cost of estimates, so we know what we're trying, how much money we're trying to find. So, all right, I'm hitting, I'm seeing heads.
You're, you were.
Give me another nod.
That's, that's for the one.
It's for both of them.
Oh, it's for both?
Both of them. Are you comfortable?
I mean, the water feature is going to be in both of them.
No, it's going to be in, in the one by the Marina.
Okay.
Is what I understood.
Yes.
Yes.
Will you push me on the swing?
No.
Just once. Just once. I promise to do it just once.
Counselperson gets special treatment.
Oh, I'll push all of you.
There you go.
So, okay, enough on that one. At our last meeting, a question was asked about the Transportation Benefit District or the car tabs, and whether or not we could create a waiver system for low income. Treasure Martin researched that, put a memo in your mailbox, and I just wanted to share that with the public. You need to be a governmental entity over five, with a population over 500,000. So it is in the RCW, but we're not nearly, anywhere near 500,000. So unfortunately, that option is not available to us.
Neither is the entire county.
Neither's the entire county, that is true. Got some really good news. We got a boiler report on Friday. I remember we were going to have, we had our HVAC contractor wanted to sell us $80,000 boilers, and we put that into the budget, and the consultant told us that our boilers have 10 to 15 years more life in them. So now, he did say, and we've been replacing valves and components in it, that's what have been failing and why we've had to evacuate City Hall. They're recommending some, you know, replacement of all the valves and the controls in them to bring them up to snuff. I also learned that, like your radiator in your car, you're supposed to flush boilers, I guess, a couple times a year. To my knowledge, we haven't flushed them in 17 years. So.
Flush them.
So we'll be, we'll be doing that. So I'm planning to bring, we're working on a scope of work to do it, have an RFP to do repair work to the boilers, implement the energy audit findings. I'm guessing we're going to probably put $40,000 into our heating and cooling system, have improved energy performance, and be able to get, you know, the life we need till, until we expand City Hall. The recommendation of the architect, remember, was to do geothermal in the parking lot when we go to expand City Hall, and I'm confident that this system's going to get us, you know, that far along. So we'll be more to come on that. And then, Mr. Dorsey, I'd heard just today about a Starbucks Community Service Day tomorrow. Do you know anything about that? I think they're going to be downtown Port Orchard doing some work.
They're going to be down on Bay Street. I think they're working on the area between Myrie's and Central Dock.
That's what I'd heard, too. Pulling weeds and spreading some fresh gravel.
Gravel, and I was asked to come down and at 3:00 and lend a hand, so.
Are you? Would the mayor, would, the mayor hasn't been asked to come down?
The mayor, I would love it if the mayor wanted to come down in my stead, because I'm still catching up.
Mayor might join you. How's that?
Okay.
I have a meeting until 3:00, but I could do it before or after. So I have a meeting with Commissioner Garrido in regards to our appeal. So hopefully that will be productive. That's all I have. Directors? Mr. Dorsey?
Yes, a couple of main topics. So first on Tremont, as you mentioned, we have nine of the 14 temporary construction easement updates completed. I have two in my office, and then the other three we should have, I think by the end of the week. So the 25th, we should have all of our temporary construction easements in place. We already received a cert three on the ride away, which means we got news today that Tremont is approved to go to add from Wash Dot. I have a meeting on Tuesday or Wednesday with the TIB and Heidi Draper with Finance to go over their, their items that they will cover in their grant and what they won't, and setting up a spreadsheet. That kind of culminates their approval process, so I'm hoping that. That kind of culminates their approval process. So, I'm hoping that maybe a week from Friday, we all go actually out to ad for Tremont for three weeks. So, we're kind of miraculously back on track for the May twenty-third contract award. So, that's where we're at on that. And on the twenty-fifth of this month, we'll be bringing forth the CACM Construction Administration, Construction Management Contract with Virger ABAM. So, that's kind of the Tremont update. Also, here tonight, Mike Pleasance, our Assistant City Engineer, has been patient.
Come up to the microphone and introduce yourself.
Thank you for having me here. I'm Mike Pleasance. As Mark said, I just joined Friday the first, or thirty-first, excuse me. Really appreciate you joining me. I've lived in the area for over ten years, and it's nice to be working close to home. Thank you.
So, Mike, can you just give us a little bit of background of your experience?
Sure. Actually, started, commuted from Seattle to work here across the street from City Hall, working for a consulting firm. And then, been with them for over twenty years. And been living here, like I said, for over ten, and commuted long distance for the last five years. So, but I've been working a lot inside cities and utility districts, doing designs, permit reviews, construction administration. So, feel pretty comfortable here. Happy to be here.
Right, and that's kind of where the main focus right now. Mike's been introduced to SmartGov, which is our permitting software and working through that. Work, has or will be working with the Finance Department on Springbrook, or, you know, financial software to, because from a capital projects tracking standpoint and working, you know, within those actual costs. The lag manual, which is the Department of Transportation Local Agency Guidelines Manual. Mike will be working on capital projects immediately on being the, kind of the city's contact person for Tremont on that project. It's, you know, a federal project. We actually have, you know, two point something, two point seven million dollar construction contract, administration contract, but we have to have somebody here that's, you know, managing that team. So, Mike will be taking that on, so I've asked him to look at the lag manual and become very familiar with that. Also, the, and then, as far as capital projects, Michael will be managing the Well Nine project, I believe. Other than if there's a, even though we're actually out for proposals for CACM on that, we may, if we do anything with that, it will be just specialty inspections. But, we'll have Michael run that project. And then, the McCormick Park, his background will allow him to, to run that for the city. We have our handbook that we're going to update, and we're on board to, to start doing a final revision to that. And then, permitting, I think you already have a few residential or commercial permits to process. And then, he's been involved in some current projects, just kind of coming up to speed. And then, I'll be asking Mike to take over SAC, because I was just doing that temporarily here. So, that's just one meeting a quarter now, I think. So, that should be good.
And what do you plan to do in your spare time?
Come to these, apparently.
I said...
Mark said it was, it was up to me.
So, for the most part, no. I think we're going to have Thomas go to the, the water pack meetings, and then, Mike go to the SAC meetings, and then, I'll do council and utility meetings. And then, another big task he's working on right now is kind of going through the, the Assistant City Engineer drive and all the folders and archiving and understanding what's there, and kind of splitting that apart, because it used to have the stormwater permit and Assistant City Engineer. So, doing a lot of that. So, I think he's got a lot of work on his plate. So, welcome.
Thanks for coming, Mike. Mr. Martin?
I'd just like the council to know, and thank you for the opportunity to send two of our people from the office, Kathy Kane and Melissa Gaines, are over at the Washington Public Treasures Association meeting that started yesterday in Shalane. This is the organization that your former treasurer, Chris Tompkins, served as president. And your current treasurer served as a president in two thousand and seven of the organization. And I'll be joining staff tomorrow when I travel over. So, thank you for that opportunity. These are, you have some real bright, young employees, and where you invest in them, I think it comes back in lots of different ways. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Martin will be at the conference shopping for his replacement. He's got instructions.
Copies of the job description, and I also have it electronically. So, I'll be out chumming, I guess. But, there are some good people out there, and there's a couple of people I do want to approach. So, thank you.
Mr. Bond?
Yes, the Planning Commission held its public hearing on the Unified Development Code, and we did not have a whole lot of testimony. I think two people showed up to, to speak to that issue, though the comment period is open for written comments through the eighteenth. So, if anybody is interested in commenting on our proposed code, they can do that. I also wanted to mention that the Blueberry and Andazio Village projects are under construction, and you may have seen this or heard about it. But, Blueberry, Ramsey, and eventually, Geiger are going to see improvements. And they just started clearing the site about a week and a half or two weeks ago. We also took in permits today for a car wash on Sedgwick across from Fred Meyer. And I'm just, every day, we keep getting more and more applications across the counter, and I have not seen it this busy as long as I've been here. So, that's all.
And we got our bid proposal back out on the street for the building across the street. So, we are getting Mr. Bond and his staff over there in that building soon. So, Ms. Gates?
I have nothing for you this evening. Thank you.
Clerk Reinderson?
The only thing that I have is that the draft that was passed out by Amy, if you can, when you're done with it, if you can, I will come and grab it and give it back to her. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We are to the...
Can I have a good order first?
Yes, you can.
We have, tomorrow morning at eight thirty is the next Roger Brooks webinar here in Council Chambers. If anyone wants to join us.
Okay, thank you for that. We are to citizen, our next, last citizen comment period. Anyone wishing to comment on any item? Jay?
I was debating, but I guess I have to say it. I look at our council, and Ms. Ashby was saying that she spent thirty-eight dollars for gas this last month. And you mentioned that your bills wasn't very much, but all of you are sitting up there with probably, in the past, salaries that have allowed you to make your homes very, very livable. And a lot of the people in our community, and I'm not speaking for myself, because I saved my whole life. I can't live high off the hog, but I live comfortably. But, they're living in rentals and homes that don't have the things that you've done, the new windows, the, the insulation and things. And their gas and oil and electric bills are outlandish. I have a friend in Bremerton that pays three to five hundred dollars a month, has rented from the same person for fifteen years. Has, that person has not done one thing other than put a new dishwasher in that was flooding the kitchen, and paid to get rid of the ants two years ago, after he tried for months to get rid of them. And she's paying this three to five hundred dollars a month on fuel for her home. So, when people are out there and they're giving every cent that they have made and earned to live, it's, it's hard to see all of the taxes. And I know there was a reason, but it's still, we've hit our community hard in the last couple of years with the increases, and a lot of people are having a hard time. And just wanted to let you know.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wishing to comment? All right, meeting is adjourned.